Thirty and April twenty-third in non-public meeting, May fourteenth, May seventh, April eighth, and April twenty-third.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Call the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the dissent agenda to include a Link Fest Country Music, the SC Monster Truck, the Tractor County DX Amateur Racing, and the Swan Hill Honda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the favor.
Aye.
Any public input?
I didn't, I thought you said the DX Racing?
Amateur Racing, yes.
No, it's amateur radio club.
Was that radio club that said racing on the town? Amateur Radio Club.
Wow, bunch.
It is. Hey, we wanted to invite all of you folks to it. We're always open having town officials come, so we'll send an email to the fire station and the PD to that they want to drop by. This is a demonstration of all the amateur radio capabilities that we can do if we do it once a year as an emergency for, and so thank you for signing up for it.
Where is that?
Right at the Potash Hamper Theater, right across the street. And we'll be there on Saturday and Sunday.
This weekend?
No, no, the last full weekend, twenty-fourth, I think the date is.
I'm onto the date.
Is it twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth?
Yeah, and I have probably just handed it to me.
Thank you, Bruce.
Sorry, what was your name?
Bruce O'Hannon, B-O-H-A-N-N-O.
Anybody else? Joe.
Railroad Street Sidewalk Extension. Last year, the sidewalk committee approached me about extending sidewalk from Main Street to my Swansea down railroad street, crossing Eaton Road and going across Summer Street. And the funds are gonna come from the Snow Sidewalk Fund. The estimate of the project is eighty-one thousand, six hundred. That includes granite curving. Part of the decision to go with the granite curving is because the bids came in very low on the North Winchester and California Street Project. Both the sidewalk and the granite curving numbers are really low. The contractor that's doing that work, the general contractor, J Evans Construction, agreed to do the sidewalk for the same price. And then the granite curb company that is doing the work on North Winchester and California Street agreed to honor their price on that project for railroad street. This Gordy Aon has this estimate and he's going to authorize the fund to be released from the Snow Sidewalk Fund. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention what's going to take place and we'll be working on it shortly. DPW is gonna do most of the work with J Evans doing the concrete work and I can't remember the name, the granite curb company out of Pembroke doing the granite curving.
Great. So, just a third question. So, the guys that are on North Winchester Street that are putting the sidewalks over and the curb, their prices came in really reasonably in love.
Yes.
So, you asked them about the extension over here and they agreed to honor the same price on North Winchester Street over there?
Correct. And line items for all the bids of the contractors that been in North Winchester Street showed that they were charging for sidewalk and granite curving. And J Evans and the granite curb company were lower on those particular lines as well. So, the thirty-four ninety-nine is a linear foot of granite curving.
And no one can touch that?
No.
Nobody can touch that?
They were as high as seventy dollars a linear foot. Initially, the sidewalk committee was not going to do granite curving, but once I talked to Gordy Aon about that price, he said he definitely wanted to go with granite curving because all the other concrete.
What was the other option, not granite?
Concrete reveal, so instead of granite curving being out, it'd just be concrete edge, it's not.
So, they pour the concrete sidewalk, it just sticks out?
Stick it up.
And now, we're gonna actually have a granite curb and then the concrete?
Correct.
Which probably lasts a lot longer?
Yeah, longevity is much better, it's much safer for as far as cars and.
And we're gonna do the same way over there?
Yes.
Looks and everything is much better?
Yes, matching up with what they've been doing elsewhere.
Correct. And that's down the corner, if I meant Wickham Hall, it's down that corner?
Yeah, from Main Street back towards DPW to Summer Street.
I got you.
Lot of people have been asking for, a lot of residents that walk in West Swansea have been asking for. So, it's more or less, I don't believe there's anything that needs to be authorized because sidewalk committee, I'll make a request on the fund, it's more of an FYI.
And they're happy with the price and all that and granite?
Yes, they've been asking for this extension for a while.
Pretty nice.
It's a big bonus.
Anybody have any questions? Have we ever determined where the money's, the actual trust? Richard, do you know where the actual trust is?
Sure.
Where? You guys manage it?
Yes. Sidewalk Committee, the Stone Trust, Stone left two trusts in his name, one is for Cottler School and the other is for sidewalks. And the town has, Joe and others predecessors have tapped that Stone Sidewalk Trust every year for extension of one or another or another, or paving parking lots for.
Yeah, can you explain the process? I know Gordy says he sends something over to the.
The usual process, the committee votes on it and Gordy sends us, me, the vote and requisition for the document. That with documentation, so it's just a absolutely legitimate request.
He said he's gonna be sending one for the North Winchester and California Street Project. There's a hundred fifty thousand dollars from the fund going to help fund all the work that's being done in North Winchester, California, and it will be coming to you shortly.
Okay, I see nothing, so I don't know.
Yeah, so Mike Brand used to deal with all that and without him here, I've been kinda picking up some of that with the highway stuff, so learning a little bit about it.
Gordy and I have been doing this.
A long time, yeah.
So, Richard, where is the actual, what's the value of the actual trust?
Oh, I haven't come up with that kind of information, I was.
We'd have to look that up.
Huh? We'd have to look that up. It's gotta be close to a million.
Um, is there a town report?
Probably not handy, but unfortunately.
I can't, we have seventy different forms, so I wouldn't venture.
Because the line item that we saw is like a hundred fifty thousand dollars. That must be what the interest is, the interest that's accrued must be that two-hundred and fifty.
I wouldn't say without looking.
Yep.
Deep build, helps him use it, does really well, others.
Because this is pretty much gonna exhaust that portion of it to involve projects.
Well, then it doesn't make money neither.
Yeah.
The principal balance as of last January first is one point seven minute. The income balance, uh, sidewalk is a quarter of a minute.
Yeah, okay, so that's the part that we're exhausting then?
Yeah.
That's invaluable.
Let it work.
Exactly, that's what.
Eventually, they'll be using it.
It's made, it's there for making stuff there yet.
There's a, there's a committee that manages it.
Now, let me see, you're bringing up that part about use on the seven, the point seven and.
Slime, is there a way to turn the scanner out a little right there? Because you're picking it up on the, shut it right off.
There you go.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Anything else? Nobody can slide.
I offered to give you some.
Look at this, look at you running it here. Do you know this is a special tier for Republicans? Tell them what, which stuff's happening now?
JFK.
JFK.
He had them all around the country.
All around the country.
Trump and.
We had this and the one, all around the country.
Look at this, oh, oh my God, that feels good.
Have the seat.
Does it work?
Have the seat, tell us what's going on in Comfort.
Oh, I'm up already?
Yeah.
Wow. Maybe learn.
This is unreal.
What do you wanna know?
Well, we wanna know how your vote was to take away local control.
The one we, that I attended, I voted to keep local control. That was the one with the parking. And that one sixty-three, Sentinel one sixty-three, I will be voting against that as removes the limitation on building permits that you guys could have, you know, issue.
So, you're voting no on that?
Yeah. Um, back in January, I guess, we were putting together the caucus's priorities and Jason Osborne, the Republican guy that was the caucus majority leader, he wanted to know what everybody thought and then he came up with these priorities, you know, which was the contract here in New Hampshire. And everybody said the same thing, where's local control? It's getting left off. Quite a few of us did vote or made known that we wouldn't support, that was taking away any local control. And something that is interesting, you can go so far right that you end up on the left and that's what's happened. That parking issue where you couldn't require more than one parking spot per unit, that had, I think it was like ninety-five Republicans for, ninety-four against, and then the Democrats all went for.
It's amazing.
Yeah. But be careful what happens when the House switches sides because if you lose local control, the state can do anything they want with us.
Yeah, they're pretty much jammed down the throats now.
And the one size fits all doesn't really apply to towns like Swansea, unfortunately. And there's so many issues. Joe, with the track, class six roads, you know, we've had those discussions in the past here, people trying to build a house on some property that's kind of landlocked because of the tough class six road. It's gonna be allowable to fit those circuits, so.
How does that work? Who would be responsible for the, would the town have to? That's gonna be a tough thing, ain't it?
Yeah.
Like, you know, who's gonna, when they wanna sue, when an ambulance can't get up there or something like that, right?
Sullivan's going through that right now, the property up there that folks wanna build on a class six road and, but because it's not on a class five road, they don't have enough road funding, so they're going through that because my son's only a butterer that's involved in that. So, yeah, that's.
That opens up a lot of Pandora boxes.
There's a lot of issues out there, so.
Well, the people, I don't know if you remember, but it was about three years ago, there were people that wanted to build on top of Hill Road and the zoning board voted against it. If they'd have voted, if they'd have allowed it, that was completely washed out during the flood. And we have no responsibility to repair.
Right.
They would have been, they would have been trapped.
And they would have had to come to the money to fix it, right? And we're talking millions of dollars, right? To fix that, it'd be a lot. That's unbelievable, Billy.
It's too bad.
But hey, that's all we're doing with that. Trying to close a gap of two-hundred and something million dollars that the Senate wants to spend in Miami budget that we didn't approve, so. All things being equal, maybe we can get a hundred million back. It's not gonna cost anything, it's just gonna be, we'll accept what their estimated revenues are for that part, so. But there are some good things that we did, that the Senate's putting back in, like the rooms and meals, they helped back in, so.
How's that work?
I don't know what the final thing is yet, but I think the House tried to pull it back a little bit from what they gave us last year. Senate put it back.
What percentage do we get of that?
I think it's like thirty or something.
Yeah, it's thirty percent. It used to be a lot more, I think.
Well, when it first came out, it used to be all.
So, when I send that big money in, thirty percent every month, every fifteen, when I send my big check in and.
And they were trying to take that away from the towns receiving that eight-bet.
When you say thirty percent of the whole, the whole bundle, like of every, like of everybody?
Yeah, the house and the hills, so.
Yeah, because they just include, it's nine percent or eight and a half, right?
We've cut it back, or they, they cut it back twice.
Oh.
Cycle. They went down to eight, I think.
Eight?
Right, was it eight and a half?
I thought it was eight and a half.
Might have been nine.
My accountant sends it out, so I don't really look, but I know it's a big number.
I just take half of that amount, that's what I tip at your place.
I always wondered with all that money, Mike, what was I doing with it? So, I didn't know if just the inspector got it or what.
Well, I mean. What else? Yeah, one sixty-three is the one that's coming up tomorrow, so. That'll be a no for me, I don't know if it's on the pass or not, so.
Mortuary.
One sixty-three. What is one sixty-three?
That's a mortuary, building permits, take that away from you.
What is actually about it? What is, what is the House of Representatives and what way? I don't even know what it is.
Well, I mean, suppose all our services were totally saturated, like Troy with their, with their sewer problems and the mill.
Okay.
Basically, they couldn't tell somebody, no, you can't. You can't hook up. I guess, they probably still could say you can't hook up to the sewer, but they'll, you'd have to let them build and put it in a septic maybe.
Ah.
But if the school was overcrowded, you know, I guess if the town decided that they just couldn't put in any more units, you couldn't do it, you know, if you made, if you said you want to have a mortuary like three years to catch up, that wouldn't be allowed, so.
Chesterfield still has that.
They have a mortuary?
And they don't restrict, they don't observe it so much, but they do have it.
Yes.
Six units a year, that's back from the sixties.
Wow.
But they don't necessarily observe it until they want to. They won't be able to now if it passes.
There's all kinds of stuff coming, I hope it doesn't go through.
What's leading this?
Money. Everybody's campaign is funded by builders and developers and things like that, so. In a perfect world, it would work. In an imperfect world, New Hampshire wouldn't be New Hampshire anymore.
Is there gonna be money for infrastructure improvements grants?
And that's, you know, I think that's what everybody said, if we can get more carrot, less stick, you know? The Senate did put into more money for the sewer revolving funds and things like that, so with any luck, that'll help, but if, I think if they really wanted to increase development, they could do a lot more funding of utilities, schools, fire stations, police stations.
There's no move for that, it's just, just jamming.
It's easier just to hang away, the right to slow anything down.
Do you think any of the bills will be vetoed?
Yeah, I'm hoping, so. That's another interesting thing in the way politics is working, is it seems like some things have been soft pulled up to the governor so that she said she'll veto them, so she will, you know, because you don't want to rub her stamp. But they give her the opportunity to veto.
Selective. I said selective.
Right.
Both, both sides save face.
And in my one bill, I think it was three forty-five, three eighty-four, something like that, to try and limit welfare to residents of the town and maybe have limits on the amount that you would have to pay. That went to the Senate, it got the table and committee retained and Jennifer Rhodes was trying to bring it over to the Senate and I had the feeling to see whether they'd done anything with it. I was hoping it was gonna be popped into the budget, but.
You know our situation.
Yeah, you know, we could save half of that. What's it last year, two-hundred and forty thousand?
We're gonna be over three this year.
Over three? You could build a fire station every year, well, paid by.
Twice.
Something you'd always have to pay, maybe some of it.
Right.
But anyway, that's probably, what else going on? I'm retired. And posting a want ad on Sentinel, Grant State, that I've been telling people in the business, if we can't find anybody, commissioners have brought up that, they're wondering if it was something that maybe the town is looking at as far as where you stand with Swansea Water in the next few years, you know, doing something together. Just putting the bug in here.
We can't revisit it till twenty-seven, but it's worth a discussion. But we are putting a TIF board together for that area and we're putting a water committee together, smaller one or small one, to be, to be prepared sometime mid-year, next year to really go forward. Underwood is still doing some engineering, or actually they're still looking to determine what the costs are gonna be. And, and that would be again to plan maybe more strategically than we had time for last year, so, because that ceases development.
And it looks like we're getting our D A grant for the precinct, for our pre-planning grant for the replacing the mains.
You have to replace the mains?
Yeah, well, they're eighty-something years old, so.
Wood?
It's about time. Nope, asbestos in it.
Scott tells us that's perfectly fine.
It's probably the best material it is, but it is what it is, so.
Wait, so how much of it has to be replaced?
We were just thinking about building all the main highways and Swansea Backer Road, Lake Street, Wilson Ponds already done, so it's about, I think the estimate was five point seven.
How many miles?
You want the town to take it over?
No, no, that's what I'm saying, sorry.
How many miles?
We got that going on, so.
So.
Probably did it one time, but.
When are you officially retired?
Next week, maybe.
Really?
We'll see.
I'll drive her home. I'll drive her home. You don't have to get out, I'll do it.
Anybody have any questions, Slime?
That I can answer?
You're a politician, you can answer all the questions.
I still stay in office, Mr. Heaven?
What's up?
I still stay in office.
It's Clark.
I'm Mr. Clark.
Paperwork. You were on water infrastructure with us, right? You still got all your stuff? Don, you would put together?
Don did some real good work, you know, with an engineering background. We, last time it came up, we dug up some stuff, he remembered some stuff. The problem that time was, there was a large grant, the MTD grant, and then the town, the water was clean. And we had a deal, I mean, we could have done it.
Yeah.
And then the damn water came up clean and it sold well. So.
Too much water, not enough MTD.
What a time. Oh, well.
Thanks, Slime. Appreciate it. You got something, hold something for you.
Steve?
Well, Richard's here and Mark. We have two items. One is Lucy Carpenter Trust, which Richard confessed address as the memo that we handed out is his. And the other is the matter of new perpetual care accounts for the cemetery.
Can we deal with that one first?
What?
Can we deal with that one first?
Sure, it's the easiest. I think the memo, which is short and it's to the point, lays down the case pretty well. And the history of this is about, I may be off on my timing, thirty years ago, we gave up, about thirty years ago, the only maintenance done was done for people who had paid in to their trust fund. That was given up and the town took over, taking care of all plots and all cemeteries. And the number of new perpetual care accounts, and this is per Lee, which is a pretty source, it went down from in the fifties to down in single digits most years. Not only that, over the past few years, the amounts going into these trusts has gone down from an average of about two-hundred to three-hundred, to an average of just over one hundred dollars. One hundred to account for these things is greater than the cost, is, is greater than the revenue earned on them. And the memo goes through a bunch of detail as to that. We have three options and I discussed these three with Cordell Johnson. Option one, taking it from one end to the other, is to, to set up minimum. The minimum would have to be about eighteen hundred dollars to cover the cost of taking care of one plot, which is about fifty dollars.
So, is that the, the minimum in the trust or the minimum contribution?
The minimum contribution for an individual to make. You could set it anywhere you want, but there have only been a handful of contributions at four hundred dollars over the past ten years. People just aren't paying into it and it keeps getting smaller and smaller each year. It finally struck me this year, or this past year, when contributions got down to fifty dollars. It just, it's costing the town money to hold this. So, you could set a minimum, but I don't think anybody would pay it. The second option, and many towns have done this, is to set up a non-restricted fund, meaning both principal and interest could be used by the town. And the accounting for it is much easier. Cordell tells me that we have to go through a warrant article for that. I didn't get into the wheres and what fours, but if he says we need a warrant article, I'll take it to the bank. I don't think enough people would pay into it to pay the legal fees for it. So, the third option is to just shut it down.
And what happens if we shut it down? Where does the money go?
We don't take money in, there is no money.
So, they're basically zero balance now because we've used all the funds?
Well, the funds that are there, we've gotta keep and we can't get rid of. But taking in new funds would cease and we would like retroactive to the first of the year, any funds that have come in, of which I'm aware none have, but I'm sure a few have, would be refunded. And we just shut it down, make life easier. And that's the long and short of it. And that's the long and short of it.
So the towns that do the non-restricted fund, how do they, how do they set those up? If I understood you correctly, you're, you're concerned about the, the legal expense to set it up?
Well, we have to figure out how we craft a warrant article and whatnot. And, uh, then we set it up and all funds coming in. And if funds have come in so far this year, they'd have to go back and come back in again, would go in a non-restricted account. So you could spend the principal. The take last year was, I believe off, off the top of my head, it's in the memo, was twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Running a fund for twelve hundred and fifty dollars is not a smart thing. I hate leaving money on the table, but to have it on the table, you gotta put in more money is kind of silly. So we would ask for a motion to do that enough.
So the, the motion would be eliminated? Good. No, it wouldn't be eliminated because those, those funds stay. So it's essentially not to accept any, any additional, additional contributions?
Yeah, I would recommend you table it and we will get Cord, Cordell to draft the resolution.
Is the concept correct that it would essentially be that we would no longer accept donations?
Right. Perpetual care trust.
Yeah, okay. Any questions?
And I will get it in order to Lori and it'll go in your next meeting.
Yeah, we could, we could work on it. So any questions? Slide?
Could we supplement the fund with something like increasing the charges for cremations and burials?
On that point, when I spoke with Lee, which took a.
Careful now.
But I had a great chat with Lee. And Lee was all for shutting this down, but he wants to come in and talk to you all about resetting rates, which is precisely what a slide brought up. When he comes in, it's beyond my control.
He'll be coming in this summer?
Yes.
To talk about that, to have it implemented for twenty twenty six?
I believe that's his goal. Do it now while you can.
Personal experience, Rochester Cemetery was four fifty for a weekday cremation bearing. Five fifty on the weekends and holidays. And I think I saw Lee down here last week and I think he said it was a hundred and a half. A hundred and twenty-five, whatever he was getting.
It's, it's way low.
Yeah.
And.
Take a couple hundred off of that. And help out this or another, maybe up.
But that is not the trustees' area. So I beg to stay away from it.
Any further discussion? So you're, you're going to have Cordell draft or you'll work?
I'll, I'll work through Lori and we'll come up with a proper wording. There's no, I probably should have done that before.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
Richard? Lucy Carpenter.
Mr. Carpenter, please.
Lucy, poor Lucy.
You have a document before you, which is labeled by Lee's draft, which is in date.
Well, this is what they have. But it's the same letter.
Yeah, okay. Just a moment's background, I told Michael Branley that the trustees would take up this consideration and the Board of Selectment has considered the matter in the past at the time of, of the land transfers and the like. The board agreed that a committee ought to be established. To develop procedures and criteria for, uh, the new method of using the carpenter funds, the carpenter trust funds for the benefit of the need of Swansea. I told Michael that the trustees of trust funds would give a, a crack at it, and that is the document that you have before you. Which is not exactly a clear, distinct set of recommendations, but it's a bunch of considerations. With, with, with a proposal, in fact. We agree with the board that setting up a dedicated committee of three people, uh, maybe more, but at least three, uh, is appropriate. And we agree that there should be a select man or designate, there should be a trustee of trust fund or designate. And that the, that Edna, as the, not human resources, but. As the coordinate, town coordinator, uh, that she be the, the third person. So that is number one. We agree to establish.
So, so the committee, the committee would be, uh, what, what is her role? Human resources? Human services coordinator, whomever's in that position?
Whomever, yes.
Would be, and then a member of the Board of Trustees or their designate, and then a member of the Board of Selectment or their designate?
Correct.
Okay, and when would this be established?
Uh, that is at your second call, your, your decision. We are, we are now recommending, uh, with a bunch of considerations, which is really the reason.
Are you anticipating that it would be this year?
Pardon me?
Are you anticipating that it would be formed this year?
Absolutely.
Okay. And what would be the charge of the committee? What would be their role?
The charge of the committee would be to oversee the distribution of carpenter funds, to whom, how, how often, how long, how big, et cetera. Make all those tough decisions, which, you know, we touched on here, ways of making those determinations. And to develop more stable procedures for considering applicants, for determining the need and so forth.
And who, who would provide guidance on, on that with the, with all your experience with the, with the fund, you and Steve in particular? Would guidance come from you as to how it, how would, how the methodology should be developed?
We, we are giving that responsibility to this dedicated committee.
But who's going to guide them?
Cordell Johnson, sort of one of the, of the veteran. You know, Edna has to be the linchpin to this. Edna or her replacement has to be the linchpin. We don't have access to welfare records or needs and the like as trustees. All we consider, you know, we manage the money, as with every other seventy odd funds that we manage, we manage the money. And we look for an orderly distribution in response to a, a reasonable documented requisition. That's our job. The subcommittee, uh, which includes one of us, one of you, one of, uh, human resources. Has to make all those determinations. I mean, there is no guidance except for Edna's experience with dealing with the needy of the town. And so much of this really does pass to her expertise.
What's the current balance in the fund?
Sorry?
Current balance?
Current balance, the, the fund spins out of between seventy and eighty-five thousand a year. So it's quite good money. We are recommending, I'm now bypassing my document, we are recommending that any, any allocation be limited the first year to ten thousand dollars in assistance.
Specific, I mean a specific allocation or a total?
To an individual. Ten, no, uh, ten thousand per individual for the first year to be followed up by with five thousand for each of two successive years. And then we tap at a three, a three-year assistance. That's, that's a suggestion.
So there is some of that type of guidance in this memo?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Slide, remember we gave five hundred dollars? Was, was that where it came from?
Eyeglasses, not ears. We haven't given anything out from Lucy.
Except, uh, sorry, you are right. We've, we've had a request from Select, came through Selectment for hearing aids.
Yeah, that's true.
But we allocated that to another carpenter home assistance fund. Which preserved the Lucy fund intact, but, you know, bypassed all this.
But it's something like that.
Yeah, that's, this was the child fund, fund for the agent and infirm, which is a way of assisting the Montana recorders. So that's.
I'll let you get back on track. Thanks for that.
Bill, look at this memo, which I'm sorry, we didn't know it wasn't out before the meeting. And it's an attempt to put some guardrails and to give some guidance. We thought about it long and hard and went back and forth. Edna was of great help. She really knows her stuff. And we decided that it will happen, be an iterative process. And this three committee board would be it that does it. I, this is not part of the trustees' responsibility. We were asked to take on a task to try and define it. Cordell brought in a lot of specific beacons that you can use related to R S As. Mark brought up another measure, the A D Ls, Adult Daily Living.
Activities of daily life.
Activities, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And there are measures out there. You just have to see how the requests come in. But it's meaningful to the town because it could, you know, spend fifty, sixty, seventy thousand each year that the town would not necessarily have to spend. So it should be organized and pushed forward. And see how it goes on a trial basis. And to put absolute limits on it now, we'd be scratching our heads for the next year.
If I could turn to the document for just a second, on the first page, the important consideration of bullet point is the idea of following Lucy's will. How do we determine who is incapable of caring for himself or herself? That is the criteria initially for admission to the carpenter home, but now we are the, the follow-up agency for the carpenter home. So how do we determine? That is an important issue. And that's where the activities of daily life come in. Cordell provided us with several criteria and assisted living homes and nursing homes, all have criteria for who gets in and who stays out. And we have listed as many as we had available to us at the time. So that's number one. That's an important consideration. And that's what the three-person committee needs to weigh is, is this person capable, incapable of caring for himself? And how do we define that? Does he need a ramp to get in his house? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's number one. And then number two, on the second page, other criteria to consider, including the following. This is where I think Selectmen, I'd like to just call your attention to some of these issues so that you too can provide some, some guidance. Determination of financial need, there we will look to Edna. And I just listed there the current definition of poverty, about fifteen thousand six fifty per annum income for an individual. It is, it is the national poverty level, or twenty-one thousand one fifty for two. So I, I passed that one off to, to Edna. Allocation of assistance, this is where the formula I just gave you, ten thousand for the first year, five thousand for two successive years. Third bullet point, uh, should we make the distribution a flat rate? Now, that's a, that's an important issue. It would be, make it the administration much easier if we, anybody who came to us and Edna said, yeah, this person is needy. It would make it easier if we just said, yeah, uh, we can give you ten thousand or twenty thousand or fifteen thousand for, for this first year. In the end, we did not make that recommendation, but I put it to the Selectmen to come back and, and say, yeah, that would make it much simpler. We decided that, you know, some people have big needs, other people have small needs, and we decided we'd be flexible and just take it on a case-by-case basis. But that, that issue was out there. I think Cordell was recommending a flat, a flat rate of assistance as well. There certainly are arguments in favor of that. I think having one year's experience will, will help us to come back to the recommendation. Residents, we are accepting the fact that some Swansea tax-paying residents actually live in a assisted living facility in Keene. Or a nursing home in Westmoreland or whatever. So we are recommending flexibility with, in terms of residency. But taking the flexibility for, for our residents.
We would definitely want our attorneys to look at because of the current situation that we're undergoing. So we, we maybe end up more specific.
I'd be glad to have somebody, uh, third, fourth, fifth opinion on this, yes. Yeah, for sure. I mean, that's an important issue. Yes, and since we do have people residing in Swansea at motels, et cetera, who may be eligible, that's an important consideration. Yep. Applicant must have exhausted every other funding needs before becoming eligible. Applicant should be required for a lot of forms, blah, blah, blah. Last point I would ask you to consider is the issue of publicity. How do we make this known? Do you wish to make it known in year one? Do we say, we now have fifteen thousand dollars available for every individual, for whoever meets our criteria in year one? I, I think not, but I, 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 you know, Edna has a steady flow of people who need assistance. And I think from that pool, we would make available these additional, new and additional forms. Rather than saying there's a pot of, at the end of this rainbow, uh, and here's the application form. But that's, that's an informal suggestion, a recommendation. We would look to you to, to support that information, I think. Publicizing it right away is, come get it, we're being a state.
Build it and they will come.
Uh, yeah, they will come. That's right. Absolutely. So that concludes my, my, my presentation. The harder matter is to name this committee and you can give us whatever deadlines.
Is there a member of the board that is interested in being on the committee?
The board, the trustees of trust funds have already, have already chosen their, their representative and that would be yours truly in year one.
Great. Well, we'll, we'll talk about it. We, we've got a tight schedule today, deadline, but.
Okay.
We certainly can make a decision next week.
Great.
And then the third person is her current human services coordinator.
Correct.
Depends upon which of my colleagues are interested.
Yeah, I, I want to emphasize the trustees will give a person to the committee. But the trustees are not responsible for this administration of the trust. The board is, your board. And it, it would be against our, whatever you'd call it, charter. I mean, we're the custodians of the funds. We're not the administrators. We only did this at the request of the town.
It's a great report, both of them.
Thank you.
Cordell was very helpful.
Yes, a second motion.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. We'll see you on the twenty-fourth.
Those are yours, so.
Thank you. Will it your lead?
No, I'll question with Mark between us, how about that, between us?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, so next item on our agenda is. All right, so next item on our agenda is to appoint the alternate to the board of, or the, the alternate trustee to the trustee of the trust fund. Which was done, we haven't quite figured out the date yet. Well.
Can you refer to it?
And we've got to check on that. So, but anyway, we'll make it effective as of today and modify it if we need to. Unless you've got something.
No, we just have that, well, the resignation memo, that one out.
Yeah, no, we, yeah.
Yeah, but did we want to reappoint Cindy?
Yes.
Do we want a motion now to reappoint her? Or?
Yep.
What can we do, Mark first, or?
We'll do Mark first. So do you want, did you know, do you guys know what, what transpired? Jim? With regard to trustee of the trust fund?
No, I don't.
Mark, do you want?
I kept you informed.
Oh, I hear you. I, I thought we had it planned out well, but I'm not sure our deeds quite coincide.
Just, I guess, just real quick, at the end of last year, I decided that I didn't want to be a member of the board necessarily in that capacity. So I asked the board to kind of look, just find a replacement for me. In doing that, they did find a replacement. In the interim of that period, I said I would be willing to stay on as an alternate. Certainly, it wasn't abandoning the board, the way, shape, or form. I just, my lifestyle changed with my wife retiring. And being on the board, there were some things I really liked and enjoyed, some things I wanted a part of. And quite honestly, I've been live ready for reporting through software in my life. And I didn't want any part of the MS nines and the MS tens and that stuff. So that was my decision. Cindy was brought in, I think, was January 30th. Might have been the day she was sworn in. And that was a date that was passed around. And we just pretty much assumed I was the alternate from that point on, not realizing that it was more, something more official. So that's where I. So I'm still on the board as an alternate, once you guys approve it, I guess. I like working with the dean. They've said likewise, something's going on there, but.
Well, I know they've enjoyed having you because Steve has told me that repeatedly.
I probably bring in a slightly different perspective. There's like, you know, different background, that's how it works, right?
So the, the concern is when, is with regard to the filing period. So we just need to make sure, maybe we should hold off on Cindy. But we can, we can certainly have Mark as an alternate. I just want to be sure we're not in violation of, of filing requirements for the position. Because the January 30th was a day before the filing period ended. So I'm just wondering whether that position should, if we go January 30th.
The trustees are recommending her fill that vacancy, correct?
Correct.
So she would fill it.
But she might have, but if we use January 30th, my question is, would she have only filled it until town meeting? And the position should have been posted for a two-year term?
Yes, so she should have technically ran in March, right?
Unless the, the appointment was made as of February 3rd. If it was made as of February 3rd, then we're outside of the filing period. And she would serve until town meeting of 26.
Well, I just sent the resignation letter in, you can take that as the date of the letter of my resignation?
No, that, that doesn't help us. So I think, I, I just, I don't, I don't like, I think this is making a mountain out of a molehill. But at the same time, I don't really want to see that we've done something incorrectly.
But I think they need her to be appointed, though.
But if we appoint her as of February 3rd, then it's outside of the filing period. And she could be appointed through town meeting of 26. And then it would go back on, on the ballot for a one-year term, to fill out Mark's original three-year term.
I think that's how it would work, yes.
Okay. You guys comfortable with that?
So we just do Mark?
We'll do both. Or we'll do Mark because it's not time-sensitive. If ever it's time-sensitive, as of January 30th.
Make a motion to reappoint Mark Palera as an alternate to the trustee of the trust fund. As of January 30th, points on Mark. Second.
So the question, as an alternate, would that be done on an annual basis, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so he would serve until town meeting of 2026? And then you would, and then there would be an opportunity to fill Mark again, or?
Either town meeting or the January 30th, September, or either version.
We try to tie them all of them, the zoning board, planning board, conservation to town meeting.
Town meeting, right. Yep.
Okay, so through, through town meeting.
Through town meeting of 26.
You all right for that? Did we totally confuse you?
His term will be until, until?
Town meeting of 2026? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Cindy would be.
February 3rd. Make a motion.
What do you think on that slide? Does that make sense?
Good.
Do you know it better than I do?
No. Our alternate sounds on the ballot, or no?
No.
This is just an extra?
Yeah.
Or if it should be on the ballot?
Oh, well, that's a question for another man. But, but, but alternate for planning board and the other boards are not on the ballot?
Make a motion that we reappoint Cindy Cordy.
I thought she was already appointed, so.
I come up with a point, Cindy Cordy as of February 3rd, 2025, trustees of the trust fund, until town meeting 2026.
Great.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
We'll sign the document that's in there, right?
Yeah, I, I misdated it, so we're going to do some white out on that.
Okay.
So I'm going to put that on top because I really want to.
He's going to show us.
Okay, so you're.
Sorry about this.
So you're official, Mark. Congratulations.
I felt official earlier, thank you.
You look more official, but now that we've done this.
Yeah, good thing we have a meeting tomorrow.
Make a motion that we appoint Alan Gosse to the Royal Trust Advisory Committee.
Chris Bowles.
Gross, Alan Gross. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is he an alternate to this committee, or is?
No, he's, he's on the committee. An official member. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Pleasure to see you. See you tomorrow. Thank you, Richard. Thanks a lot for all you've done.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Is there a term on Alex?
No, we'll have to, Laurie will correct.
The term?
Yeah, it would be for a specific term.
Right. Is that, can I just say that? I think that's town.
Okay, can we go to the July 4th?
There's no term.
Yeah, right, yeah. So we'll have to check on that. Okay.
Due to 4th of July falling on a schedule half-day for the most town employees, I moved to authorize town departments to close at 1:00 PM on Thursday, July 3rd.
Second.
So I just had a question on that. Originally, I thought it was town hall, employees. So how does this affect other departments? Is reci, I don't know, I don't go on a Thursday.
I think it should be, I think it should be at the department's discretion.
Discretion?
Right. Please department.
Probably, probably. What they probably go?
Oh, come on now. I don't think so.
On a bet? On a bet?
All right, I got a buck on it.
Okay.
I'll be in touch with Eric.
Yeah.
So how, how, how would we better word this, then?
I guess I should have worded it to say, instead of town employees, I don't have the documents in my hand yet.
How about this? Head to discretion of the department, excuse that, isn't that?
Yeah.
I think we leave it alone.
You stick your word.
That's because you were worried about the term for the, we're going to skip over this. We're going to skip it, Laurie. Let's go. So, all right, so why don't you talk to us about what you want to be designated to sign?
Whoa, this is your bond.
That's right.
And everything's in here, so.
Get one, your signature. Oh, wow, gee, kids.
Yeah, so need your packet, so we have to go through all of those resolutions, okay? And that's the loan agreement for the bond for this fire station. And what's the other term of the law? Okay, yeah, so we, I think I'll give you this folder. And I think Bill's the only one that needs to sign it. But we need a motion from the board that you're all in agreement with every one of the resolutions in this loan agreement, which I copied and pasted them in here. Just so she can incorporate them in the, in the meeting minutes. And then we just, we need a motion from the whole board to accept that with each of the resolutions as stated.
So the motion as written?
Mm-hmm. Question on this one, this seems to not flow to the next stage. So the loan agreement is right here. So, so basically, you guys are going to look through this. And then you're going to have to make a motion to each of those resolutions in the agreement. And there's four copies that just Bill will sign, so.
These have all been renewed, been reviewed by a renowned bond counsel?
These were sent to us from the bond council. And they have to be completed by June 13th, I believe. So this is one that we didn't, and it just Bill will sign, don't date it. She's supposed to put it in front, don't date it. No, I mean, it's, it's, I sent it to you in the email.
But you were copying on the email.
I was.
My, my, it's always if the attorney's drafted.
I just, I don't want to get mixed up because I have four, four copies that I have to get back.
Okay, we can do it tomorrow.
Okay, so.
So you just need the motion right now?
And then he'll sign a bit.
I moved to authorize town administrator, Laurie.
During the, or was it, wait, the first one, so. Okay, so on the second page right here.
She wants to do.
Under new business.
We're just going to go in order.
Oh, oh, no, that was a different, yeah, we skipped, you skipped right over that.
No, we didn't, we're doing it now.
Okay, that's not for the bond. This was for the designation of authorities for the clean water SRF.
Right, and that's designating you to, to sign on our behalf.
To, not the bond, that is.
No, not the bond.
Yeah, so.
It's other projects.
Exactly, so the other projects are going to be the stormwater asset management, the Webber Hill slope stabilization, California and North Winchester street improvements, energy efficiency and solar array, and the comprehensive wastewater treatment facility study. So that's what I need authorization for. So yeah, you are right on that one. And then we'll go on to the bond one.
Right.
Okay.
And we've to authorize the town administrator, Laurie, under.
Radyhola.
Radyhola, yeah. As the designated representative for the town's wanted for the following projects. Stormwater asset management, Webber Hill Road slope stabilization, California and North Winchester street improvement, energy efficiency and solar array, and comprehensive WWTF study.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll go to the bond.
Okay, now to the bond.
Which you already addressed.
Yeah, and there was one part here, because it is a lot of material there. And this was sent from the bond council, so there was one section to just make sure, it says there's several matters that we would like to bring to your attention. First of all, it says to examine Exhibit A in the loan agreement, which sets forth the principal amount of the bonds, which you obviously are aware of, that will be sold to the bond bank and establish it the schedule for principal payments. And additionally, you should review Section 1D of the loan agreement, which establishes the maximum interest rate cost.
Do we need to read the resolved paragraphs?
Where? I don't think we need to go through all of them, but you guys need to be aware of each of them. And because that's what you're voting on. And that's what the motion should say, that you're, how we have it ordered there, that you agree with all of the resolutions. Can I just confirm that? I think this was two, and then. Two, the modified the bond resolution? Just a little start, see how. Number two ends with required by the bond resolution? No, it's not, never resolved. It's not the resolutions. Okay, I can send them to Stockholm, see. It's what was copied and pasted into the packets. So the next line starts with.
What bond prices have gone up?
Substantially reform.
It said bond prices. Five and three quarters.
What?
Good.
Five point seven.
Should we just borrow it from Mark?
At that rate.
Who was the last big bond?
At that rate.
I would have done it, I'm sorry, sorry.
And the two eighty. What was that bank for?
Damn, no, we never won for the damn, no, those didn't have.
Those are threes. Those were threes.
Yeah.
Just other than we have these threes.
Never five point?
But you can refine those.
I'll do a five-year bond, five and a half.
Five year? Of course you would. Interest on.
The bond bank with the following resolutions.
I'll have to consult with my fellow trustees.
We'll throw in perpetual care of some of their life insurance.
I move to adopt the authorization of bonds as stated below. As documented on the certificate of vote regarding authorization of bonds with the Hampton Municipal Bond Bank with the following resolutions.
And can we can just, as noted? Or you need to?
I think that's fine.
As noted.
As stated in the loan agreement.
As, as stated in the loan agreement.
It changes to with the bond resolutions. Have your files, or even the list of all?
No.
With the resolutions as stated in the loan document.
These resolutions.
In the loan agreement.
Sorry.
In the loan agreement.
So.
It's sort of works.
I think, no, the, the motion refers to these here, doesn't refer to the loan agreement. The next one refers to the loan agreement.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just asking, do these need to be read into the record, or can they be copied?
I don't think they need to be read into that.
So we're following resolutions as noted in.
So the, this one's.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He didn't change that, it was just how the first motion was stated, the second one is the loan agreement.
Yeah. You ready?
Do I have this motion correct, then? What do you have? It should just be what's listed in here, right, in the package?
Yeah, because it's, the, the, the motion. Yeah, because it, the, the, the motion references the resolutions, the four resolutions that have four that come out there. And the motion referenced.
As stated in the. Loan agreement.
Okay.
No. Did this language come from Renal?
No.
Or Andrew?
No, I made this. All they need is a vote from the board stating that you've adopted the bond resolution with the following, that you are aware of all the.
Yeah, with the four resolutions.
Yeah.
Yep, that's basically what.
So that's what we just said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we go to the, with the loan agreement.
I moved to approve and sign the loan agreement with the Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank for the purpose of furnishing a new fire station.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Let's get, okay, then we go to congressional. So the next is that congressionally directed spending. Designation of authority, we're still working through that, Laurie's been working very hard on that.
It's all done.
It's all done?
Yeah.
We finally got it?
I can, once you guys approve me, I can submit tomorrow.
Great, so this was money that Senator Shahin had allocated for us three years ago? Something like that, three years ago, it's about two hundred thousand dollars.
For what?
For the fire station.
Oh, this is about that, okay.
Do you want that in the minutes? Senator Shahin.
Oh, sure, we should correct Senator Shahin.
Two hundred thousand?
Yes. Used to be called the earmark.
And if it's the, we've been obligated in that money. I found the email that says we've been obligated, but then nobody ever filled out the application because the fire station.
Can't not get voted in.
Exactly, so now this is, this is the application, so they, we may not get it, but we're gonna try to get it.
Right.
So give him credit in the minutes.
Several years, several years ago.
Senator Tor.
Yeah. She's been very, she's actually come to town several times, which is quite an honor.
She came here? Sure. She sat with you?
She did. Or I sat with her. She's still with me.
Did she like you?
She loved me.
She loved me.
I didn't get it. I don't either, it worked.
I moved to authorize the town administrator Laurie, so you left him here. Radilla. Designated for the town of Swanford and to sign all necessary documents. Submit a, submit all of the grant application for the new fire station.
Second.
So which documents am I signing?
None for this term. The bond ones.
Yeah, okay, so it's not, okay. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're earning your money tonight, buddy. Right? I recommend.
Well, you did, okay, so, um, oh, now it's up to Selectman Tempesta.
Isn't that a great option, worded that?
I know.
I was so impressed with that.
It's the best part of the whole packet.
Well, Jimmy's here, you might be interested in this, Jimmy. We did move in a good positive direction. We picked, you know, the, the worst of the worst. And we sent out letters.
For people that don't know, can you explain a little bit so they understand? What, what the process was?
Yeah, you just gotta be careful that I don't say addresses or nothing like that, right?
Just the concept.
Concept. The houses, the, the places that are, there's a lot of stuff up front, you know, and everywhere, right? We need to clean that out. There's, there's a lot of things that I think that in the past, we just have to be a little more aggressive on, so I took it a hold of it and I started getting people moving on it, went with this team and Laurie's help. We established a letter to go out to all of these places. We didn't hit them all, we hit the five worst that we think are. Actually, there's one more gonna be added, which would be Wilson Bond area. So we got that out, it, it went out registered, right? Certified. We haven't got any responses back, I think we gave a fourteen day response. We need a response from these people. And I just wanted to just keep everybody up to date that we are moving in a good direction. We're gonna see what comes back, we're gonna go to the end with this and keep going. We're gonna make a statement, hopefully, and get these things done.
Getting them the opportunity to get the stuff cleaned up and get the properties cleaned up. Or we have to pursue legal.
That's right. That's right. Hopefully, we don't have to go that way, hopefully, you know, we're trying to work with them and see if we can get the properties cleaned up in an easy way. But we are prepared to take it a step further and we will go that way if we have to. So it's just time now, right? We're waiting, right, Laurie? And Laurie was a big part of this and she stepped right up with the plate with me to help me, thank you for that.
So, so just on that, bizarre zoning support? This, I don't think I ever read anything specific. And to give you an example, last community I lived in, there was nothing that would deter from, you know, a, a nice environment, your neighborhood. It had to be beyond the property setback line, not directly visible from the road. When you drove down that road, it wasn't an eyesore. That is in the ordinance, the town ordinance. The exceptions to that were horse trailers, just talking to these very horse oriented communities. Didn't mean that you couldn't have stuff, it just meant that it had to be behind a fence or something, shrubs or something more protected, right? So I didn't know if our ordinance supports, how it supports that. But it's good to know because if it doesn't, let's get it from the planning board so we can make this part of our ordinance.
I think it probably already is, I haven't had a chance to look through all the ordinances, but I'm going off of Chris.
Right.
He's been working along with, Chris Levy, our, our code enforcement zoning officer. But there are, you know, New Hampshire statutes that you can't have a junkyard. I know in other towns, you can't have more than three unregistered vehicles and that might, that's so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, the RSA specifically states junk.
Right.
And it just developed.
The lawyers are unregistered.
And just because the car has a plate on it.
And also health hazards, so the health, the health inspector, if it becomes that bad, or it's, you know, a concern for the health.
I commend this effort, they're very good. I, I love it here, this is one of my sore spots, because where I came from, this did not exist.
Maybe like Laurie's edge, for instance, the people that were stopping to visit a guy that was sixty four passed, they're all in their now living.
They're all up?
Or in their living now full time. If you come down past your road by the shoe store at twenty five thirty or six, people are coming in that shop. And they're, and they're all night, and five, five thirty in the morning, they get up and they get back, they back on the street again, so it's, it's.
Slaughter's house.
Yeah. It's more than just.
Slaughter's house, sounds like.
You're actually in the house of them, see them and visit them. Shane used to have the, no more than four unrelated people in a unit, and the legislatures administered dispensing them down.
So, um, I guess, a little bit, I guess for a public, I think there's some meetings on it anyway. The, um, the property. On where's, on Wilson Pond Road, where the person that's filled it with toys and things that.
I walked it yesterday.
You did see that.
Is that in the towns?
I walked right down it.
Yeah.
Is that the right of way?
It's the right way, so be careful walking down that because in total, there are holes with fence netting and.
I had a hard time getting through, but I got through it. I made it all the way to the water and there's boats actually sinking in the water.
Well, there's boats that axle grease on them, you know, they're, it's a real problematic first. But anyway, the, the house across the street, the trailer.
For sale.
It's for sale and the realtors.
Stopping, they don't wanna buy it because they have the deep, they might have the right of way.
You got the story.
I, I went through the whole thing and I, and it just needs to be fixed. It's just easy. No taxes are being paid on that, somebody else will have to do.
As long as we have fee simple in it, then we own it, we can clean it up. Unfortunately, when Judge Roroff made his decision, he, he allowed them.
To use it, you told, you said.
Not, I just reread it, it wasn't quite that specific. But he, he put in, in his decision that that was an unusual characteristic, which made the property unique within its setting. And, and he established that they could essentially use half of that as their side, as their setback. So I, my assumption is that he's just, the individual involved has just taken it upon himself that he now owns it, would be my guess.
But using it as a setback is totally different than using it and using it and preventing people from the right of way.
Exactly.
It's totally.
All right, let me, let me understand that a little bit. You caught from me.
Hey, let me do it.
So.
Morning, you want anything?
So when you say the setback, they can.
You wake up in the morning.
When you say the setback, in so many feet, that means they can walk on it and whatever, but not put stuff on.
No, setback is the property boundary.
Okay.
To a structure. Right, and he only had, in that case, they had twelve feet, I think, and you know, twenty? And the judge determined it because right here is a town owned drainage soil, that that should have been considered as part of the setback.
In case he wants to push that up or something, you can use all of that as a setback.
Yeah, it was, it was a part of a carport.
Yeah. So that's totally different, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, you would make a lot of people happy, because that.
It's gonna happen.
What we need now?
It's gonna happen.
You want to have a party, you know, we do it.
Oh, she's a screamer, got her all prepared for her update.
No, he didn't. What happened?
Best time I asked, we're ready.
Well, you have it, right, and he doesn't ask, isn't that unbelievable? And he asks and puts under the gun. Too greedy to pull that. And then you're already far.
Real quick, so we, we met with the team, I guess a couple weeks ago, right after the other meeting to discuss the fire, the new fire station, so the update there is, we're just waiting on the contract from Gordon.
Laurie, do I like this as a mosquito? You got it.
Thank you.
See him? I didn't want to crawl in here, but.
Thank you. So we're waiting on the contract from our architect for board and services there, and then also the foundation plan, because the board would like to start a little bit sooner, so, um, so once we get the foundation plan, they can get started on that. The details of the floor plan are being ironed out and we're awaiting the final design. So that's that, the bond, we just went through, the loan application for the town in the amount of twenty five, two million five hundred thousand for thirty years has been approved, subject to no adverse changes in our financial position. The loan agreement is in process, we did that tonight. Loan agreement includes an estimated maximum interest rate, interest rate, which was set well above the current market as we need to allow for the actual interest rate to be less than the maximum rate, so it was set a little bit higher, so hopefully it will come down from there. And the grant application, which we just signed up on that, will be submitted tomorrow. So hopefully we get that, I'm sure you've all seen the posting for the North Winchester roadwork, so we contracted with Jay Evans Construction out of Bradock Borough, Vermont, to serve as a general contractor for that project. And the reconstruction, reconstruct the streets and sidewalks on North Winchester Street and Route ten to California Street and California Street to Route ten to Main Street, a little bit confusing there. Construction is scheduled to take place this summer, with the first phase beginning on North Winchester Street on the second, so it already started this week. And North Winchester Street will be closed to through traffic at times for most of June and July. The Carpenter Home, so we received a list of maintenance issues from the tenant there. And D P W Director Joe Selectman Tempesta and I visited the property and there are some maintenance jobs that need some attention, so we are going to settle that to be on the agenda for next week. The administrative position, that's open, the full time administrative assistant position. As of today, we have nine applicants and we will begin the interview process on Friday, June sixth. And then I just had a little welfare update, we're in the process of updating the town's welfare guidelines right now. It's been very, very busy over the last couple weeks. It's putting, obviously a strain on our budget, but also a strain on, on the employees as well. It's a lot.
Let's see that.
I'd like to say that's it, but that's all I have been doing, but we've done a lot more.
In addition, there's other things that, that can be expanded on. For, for the fire station, that's coming through the planning board next week. The filing for the F A eight seventy four sixty, that was filed last week, so that process is starting, that's thirty to sixty days. Carpenter Home, we're, we're gonna be meeting with them to, to discuss the process moving forward, that's just to embellish what you said with regard to, to that, so my expectation is that we'll have a decision and termination by our first meeting in July. So, and then the last would be to ask you if you could. Start the process and educate us on the investigation of renaming California Street to Main Street, coming from Route ten. If, if it's something we can pursue, it does, does require some public hearings.
Would you just like Google now?
Yeah, Google, tell you to go left or right. Yeah, because California Street's both on the east side and the west side.
So do I, can you even share?
Well, that's, that's why there's a public error. Doesn't mean that we do it. You won't be upset when the ambulance goes to the right place.
It's the west side, sorry, the west side of.
East side.
That's what you wanted to name it, you said.
At least look into the process.
The F Y R, the conservation committee has no issues with the fire station.
Awesome. It's wild. You've done well. The fire hose is starting to drip. All right, I guess we're going to non-public on somebody or anything else. All right, Garrett, listen to your speaker, say it. Where are we going with it? Laurie, where are we going with this?